Clock on the wall says 2:00. Let the call the March meeting of the Planning Commission orders. Let the call and Commissioner Goodman to do the invocation.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for just being God, for your divine protection over our city. And God, we ask you for the Spirit of wisdom and knowledge as we go forth on this day. That all that will be done will be done for your glory and to your glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Wyer, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Hicks. Commissioner Stalers.
Here.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Here.
And Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Sir, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Wyer. Are there any corrections to the February meeting minutes? Additional correction, they'll stand as presented. We have eight items on our agenda today. We have one item that requires some action, and, Mr. Wyer, will you address that, please?
Yes, sir. As it relates to CUP 2021-013 Shady Pine Borrow Pit, staff was made aware of an issue as it pertains to public hearing notification procedures for land use items. In accordance with State Code Section 15.2-2204, the Code of Virginia, this application, due to the property's proximity to Isle of Wight County, requires notice to be made to the county administrator of Isle of Wight. Inadvertently, this required notice was not made to the county administrator. As such, due to this item not being properly noticed to all parties as required, through the Code of Virginia, it's appropriate to remove this item from your agenda and not proceed with a public hearing until after such time appropriate notice is made. So with that being said, a motion to amend the agenda to remove this item would be appropriate.
So moved.
Yes.
Second.
Got second. So item number C will be removed from our agenda. Any discussion on the motion? We have to do this with a voice vote. We have the device in front of us not working yet, they're not reassigned. Mr. Wyer, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
And that motion is approved by a vote of 8 to 0.
Okay. Before we get started, I'd like to make a request, maybe a motion from the commission if they're in agreement, that item E, which is the condition use permit request, CUP 2022-003, I'm sorry.
F.
Condition use permit request, CUP 2021-001, Hope Center Ministries. It's for a condition use permit, and it's aligned with the item B, which is rezoning request, like maybe a motion to combine the two, but we have two separate presentations and two present, present public hearings. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Staylor?
One discussion. Can't we have one presentation?
No, we're gonna need two presentations because one is for a rezoning, and the other one, if the rezoning passed, then we move to the.
Additional.
Condition use.
Can't we just do this last month?
Item, that was two identical items.
All right.
I'll second.
Second, okay. And Mr. Wyer, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chairman, that vote is approved by a vote of 8 to 0.
This afternoon, we have now seven public hearings. Public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal. The meetings are videotaped and televised for public hearing. The first item on our agenda today is rezoning request, RZN 2021-022, 240 Gloucester Street. Mr. Wyer, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Rezoning request, RZN 2021-022, 240 Gloucester Street, submitted by Randall Montfiston, MIBI International LLC, on behalf of MIBI International LLC, property owner, in accordance with Section 31304 and 31305 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to rezone the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District to RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District for property located at 240 Gloucester Street, zoning map 34G282K, parcel 13D. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Whaleyville Voting Borough, zoned M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, Core Support Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2021-022. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will be presenting staff's report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is a request to rezone the subject property from M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District to RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District for the purpose of constructing a single-family dwelling. The property up for discussion is located within the Core Support Use District in the Central Growth Area. To the north and south of the property are single-family dwellings, zoned RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District and M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. And to the east are single-family dwellings, zoned RM. And to the west is the Birdstone Facility, zoned M2. The subject parcel was created circa 1917 and previously featured a single-family dwelling, which was demolished due to the condition of the home being beyond repair. In accordance with Section 31-801 subsection FE, as the structure was demolished due to the condition of the home rather than a natural disaster or other act of God, the structure cannot be rebuilt as the parcel is currently zoned M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District where single-family dwellings are not permitted. The property is located within the Core Support Use District, which should primarily be composed of traditional residential subdivisions. Single-family dwellings are the most common use found in this use district. The subject property is surrounded by single-family dwellings, zoned RM and M2. Therefore, the proposed rezoning would allow for the orderly development along Gloucester Street as the character of the area is defined primarily by its detached single-family residential uses. Additionally, the applicant has indicated that the layout for the existing neighborhood would support the rezoning of the parcel to residential use and would provide curb appeal and value to the surrounding neighborhood. Under Section 31-406 of the UDO, single-family dwelling, detached dwellings are permitted as a byright use in the proposed RM zoning district. There is a minimum lot size requirement of 10,000 square feet for the plating of a new parcel. Currently, the subject parcel is comprised of 4,480 square feet, which does not meet the required minimum square footage for the new parcel, for a new parcel in the RM zoning district. However, it is important to note that the subject parcel is an existing platted parcel of land, and the parcel size is consistent with the surrounding parcels in the immediate vicinity that are zoned RM. Additionally, based on the provided survey, the parcel does have adequate space to construct a single-family dwelling while meeting the required setbacks for the RM zoning district. The Department of Public Works Traffic Engineering has reviewed the request and has expressed no concerns. Public water and sewer are currently available to serve this site, and the Department of Public Works Engineering has reviewed the application and expressed no concern. However, further review will take place at the time of site development. In regards to the schools, based on the size of the property, the site could currently be developed for one single-family dwelling. However, under the current M2 zoning district, single-family dwellings are not permitted. The new single-family dwelling would not generate any students in accordance with the student generation rates outlined in Section 31-601 of the UDO. Therefore, no impacts to the school system are anticipated as a part of this request. Lastly, staff has closely reviewed the request to determine its compatibility with the criteria outlined in Section 31-304 of the UDO as it pertains to requested rezonings. After review, staff finds that the proposed rezoning from M2 to RM zoning district aligns with the goals and objectives established within the Comprehensive Plan and Unified Development Ordinance. The proposed zoning district is consistent with the surrounding land use patterns. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of RZN 2021-022. I'm available to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. We're now open to public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this item?
Good afternoon. My name is Dominic Epps. I am one of the owners of MIBI International, and looking forward to getting this property underway. This was a project that we purchased back in 2017, and we received a building permit from the city. Unfortunately, the scope of the work was more than what was required, and at the time we were demanded to turn the building down. All right. But at this time, we are looking forward to putting a new construction building on the property. You know, new construction, houses are very slim right now in the market, but we're looking forward adding some good curb appeal to the neighborhood. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Epps. Is anyone else who speak in favor of this request? And are there anyone in opposition to this request? We're close to public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Edwards.
Mr. Chairman, I guess with silence, I move for the approval of RZN 2021-022.
Motion from Commissioner Eppes.
Second.
Second. Second for Ms. Hicks. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Wyer, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Sir, the motion is approved by a vote of 8 to 0.
Mr. Epps, you got approval of this body, and we go to City Council on April 20th for their determination. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is rezoning request, RZN 2022-002, Hope Center Ministries. Mr. Wyer, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Rezoning request, RZN 2022-002, Hope Center Ministries, submitted by E. Greer Ferguson, Ferguson Rawls &amp; Raines, PC agent, on behalf of Rachel Colbertson, Hope Center Ministries Inc., applicant on behalf of Daniel and Mary Jo Vanderhay, property owners in accordance with Section 31304 and 31305 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to rezone the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District to OI Office Institutional Zoning District for property located at 1653 Holland Road, zoning map 33, parcel 99. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2022-002. Alexis Baker, the planner, will make the presentation.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of Planning Commission. As mentioned, the subject property is located at 1653 Holland Road and is further identified as zoning map 33, parcel 99. The applicant is requesting to rezone an approximately 1.9 acre property from RLM Residential Low Medium Zoning District to OI Office Institutional Zoning District to establish a zoning district that would allow for the proposed use, a medical, physical, and mental rehabilitation resident facility to use as a substance abuse rehab facility for up to 32 female residents. However, as a medical, physical, and mental rehabilitation resident facility is not a byright use within the O and I zoning district, conditional use permit is required, and you will be hearing conditional use permit, CUP 2021-001, right after this presentation. As seen in this map, the city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies this property as being located within the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. The subject property is currently zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Zoning District. There is a single-family home and detached garage on site. A gravelled parking area and driveway are also on site. To the north, there is residential, zoned residential low medium zoning district. To the south and east is Spates Run Reservoir, zoned conservation zoning district. And to the west is more residential, zoned residential low medium zoning district. There are also non-residential zoning districts, such as the B1 and B2 zoning district, located less than 300 feet to the west, and approximately 1,000 feet to the east of the subject property along Holland Road. The property is located in the city's Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area with a portion within the Resource Protection Area. The RPA requires a 100-foot vegetative buffer where no land disturbance should occur. It should be noted that currently, the property has parking for up to six vehicles on site. While it was noted in the report that there will be no more than six vehicles on site, the applicant has mentioned that occasionally special events will be held after 6:00 PM and on weekends to allow family to visit residents of the facility. Based on calculations for hospital or medical facilities, an estimated eight parking spaces are required. However, this will be determined by the zoning administrator. A site plan waiver or site plan, depending on the size of the parking area, will be required. This medical, physical, and mental rehabilitation residence facility, as mentioned, will house up to 32 female residents struggling with drug and alcohol addiction between eight and 12 months. All residents are required to receive medical detox and must be medically discharged by a doctor prior to admission to the Hope Center Ministries program. Hope Center Ministries will employ three staff members, which will include a director responsible for managing finances, ensuring the facility is maintained, and handling any issues related to risk management; a recovery coordinator, who is responsible for recruiting and training all certified volunteers; and the night monitor, who lives in the facility with the residents and assists other staff members with 24-hour coverage for the facilities. The existing single-family detached house and detached garage on the subject property will be renovated to create a total of five bedrooms, two full baths, one half bath, and a communal bathroom with three toilets and three showers. A washer and dryer will be located in both buildings. No more than 30 people comprised of a maximum of 32 female residents and the night monitor will be residing in this facility. And I'll also provide more in-depth information regarding the floor plans when we begin talking about the conditional use permit. So in accordance with Appendix B, Section B4 of the Unified Development Ordinance, rezoning applications must include a statement of the reasons for seeking an amendment to the zoning map. The applicant has stated that their intent is to use the property for a medical, physical, and mental rehabilitation resident facility for the purpose of a substance rehabilitation facility, which is not permitted in the RLM zoning district. Staff evaluated this applicant, application according to the Comprehensive Plan, Unified Development Ordinance, and the Adequate Public Facility Ordinance. The applicable policies in Chapter 2, Land Use and Growth Management Section of the Comprehensive Plan include Policy 2-1, keep focused, keep development focused in a designated growth area; Policy 2-2, assure development occurs in a predictable and orderly manner; Policy 2-3, promote a balance of residential and non-residential land use; and Policy 2-4, promote compatibility and land use patterns. The rezoning request is within Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. Within this district, traditional residential subdivisions, smaller retail businesses, professional offices, and civic buildings and community facilities are recommended. In Section 31-403 of the UDO, the OI zoning district is described as appropriate for institutional indoor retail, service, and office uses requiring arterial street access, and business and commercial development along urban corridors. The rezoning requests and proposed use appear to be appropriate in the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. Furthermore, non-residential zoning districts, such as the B1 and B2 zoning districts, are located less than 300 feet to the west and approximately 1,000 feet to the east of the subject area along Holland Road. The estimated 1.9 acre property is subject to this rezoning request would be required to comply with parking requirements, architectural standards, and additional setbacks and landscaping requirements due to its location in the Special Corridor Overlay District. Examples of requirements under the Special Corridor Overlay District, or SCOD, specific to the subject property include a 30-foot SCOD setback and a 15-foot vegetated landscape buffer from Holland Road. In addition to SCOD requirements, the applicant is required to install a vegetated screen consisting of a double-staggered row of evergreen screening trees spaced 20 feet on center, or a triple-staggered row of evergreen screening shrubs spaced 10 feet on center, where the subject property, proposed to be rezone, OI zoning district, is adjacent to the RLM zoning district. The size and location of the subject property would preclude it from more intensive uses allowable under the OI zoning district, such as hospitals and office parks, that may not be appropriate adjacent to the RLM zoning district. Additionally, this application complies with several policies in Chapter 5, Municipal Facilities and Services, in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Applicable policies include Policy 5-5, continue to provide a high level of police protection throughout the city, and specifically under this policy, there is Action 5-5A, utilize resources efficiently and effectively in preventing and suppressing criminal activity. And then Policy 5-9, expand efforts to eliminate drug abuse and the sale of illegal drugs in the city. The proposed rezoning to OI zoning district and the concurrent conditional use permit request for a medical, physical, and mental rehabilitation resident facility, as stated by the applicant in their provided narrative, will be able to alleviate some of the stress experienced by law, local law enforcement, and emergency departments. By housing up to 32 female residents, Hope Center will provide these recovering addicts with a safe place to experience freedom from drug and alcohol addiction. As a result, this should lessen the burden on our overpopulated correctional facilities and overcrowded hospitals. The Hope Center Ministry program assists women struggling with drug and alcohol addiction through a faith-based 12-step program incorporating a three-phased approach over an eight-to-12-month timeframe. Currently, Hope Center Ministries, established in 2007 with Suffolk, proposed as the 34th center nationally, boasts a 70% success rate among their graduates. Additionally, program participants will exit the program with vocational training and skills. Generally, no issues were found with the rezoning request under the UDO and Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance. However, there may be a need to upgrade the water meter and pump station as a result of this new use. This would require a development plan reviewed by public utilities. Moreover, if additional parking is needed, the applicant will need to submit a site plan or site plan waiver to the planning department, and depending on the size of the paved parking area, may need to comply with stormwater management requirements. There were no, there were no traffic concerns, as generally no more than six vehicles will be on-site unless during family events, which will occur after 6:00 PM during the week and on weekends. Based on these findings, staff recommends approval of RZN 2022-002. This concludes my presentation, and staff will stand by for questions after the public hearing. Thanks.
Ms. Baker. We're now open to public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of Suffolk Planning Commission. My name is Greer Ferguson. I'm an attorney practicing at 332 West Constance Road here in the city of Suffolk, and I am here to speak on behalf of the applicant, Hope Center Ministries, for this application. I'd like to thank the planning staff for doing an excellent job of just telling you basically what we're attempting to do. You know, when I, when I looked, first looked at this, obviously, I didn't know who Hope Ministries was when they came to me. It's not like you're asking to put in a big subdivision or new house. It's something just a little bit different. So we need to look at what is this product that we want to bring into the city of Suffolk. Hope Ministries, Inc. is a corporation which, which right now operates over 30 facilities, as has been described to you by staff, most of which run between 20 and 35 or 40 residents who are there for some type of rehabilitation involving either alcohol, drugs, or a combination of the two. We'd be number 33, 34. Right now, there are over 700 people who are, who are underneath or within these facilities going through the programs that we propose to bring to Suffolk. Each of the facilities, each of these facilities is actually sponsored by a local church. In our case, here in Suffolk, we would be sponsored by Family Harvest Church, which is located on Manning Road. The program is very faith-based. One of the requirements on the back end, just so you get a taste of, of what is expected of these people to be considered successful, they expect them to continue to go to church after they finish these programs. They feel that a deep sense of faith is one of the things that keeps people from going back to their old ways that really no one wants, but sometimes people just can't resist. And that is what these people have done. Many of the people who are involved with this program have been through the program. They've seen the darker side of life, and they're doing this. It's, it's a charitable organization, it's a 501(c), so they're not here to make money while they make a living doing it. They're here because their heart's in it. Their heart is in what they are doing. We've looked at the location, when I went out to the location, it's, it's almost really a perfect location for what they are proposing to do. As you come in off of 58, which is chaos right now, but as you come off of 58, just past Hillcrest Baptist, as you're heading west, you've got parts of Lake Spade, which is a natural boundary, and then you turn into the driveway to what will be this facility, and it's now a 4,200-square-foot house with a detached garage that goes way back on the property. The houses which you saw on the diagram, which are next to us, are really way up, right up on the roadway, and our facility is way in the back. So we've got Lake Spade on one side of us, we've got Lake Spade on the backside of us with heavy vegetation between us and any residences. Then we've got 58 in front of us, and then just a couple of, with those few houses, and then to the west of us, there's really not much going on. You can look at the maps, and they speak for themselves. Obviously, there's a need in our, our community, and what I would like to do, because the obvious questions are, how in the world can you put 30-some people in a, in a, in a building and expect it? And, you know, my response is kind of like, well, you know, when I was in college, I lived in a fraternity house, and I was just young and didn't know what I was doing then, but we managed, we had a common cause, we shared rooms, there were 30 of us in the house, we had a kitchen, and we lived together, and we lived well with the community. That is exactly what these people will do. They live as a community within their house. The residences each go through a phase of, it's gonna take eight to 12 months to graduate from this program, and I'm gonna have Ms. Colbertson probably speak to you for just a second, she can explain it better than I can, but when they go in, they're pretty heavily into the facility, they don't leave for the first couple of months, then they graduate to where they go out and go into training. The organization tries to partner with local large businesses, and, and they actually act as somewhat of a workforce. They, for instance, might go to Lipton T or one of our large warehousing facilities and say, look, we can provide you with 15 workers, and we, if you... and say, look, we can provide you with fifteen workers, and if you can, you know, if we can, whether it's in warehousing or whatever. And so, on the front end, the money is paid to the organization, and the people who are in the program, that is how they're paying their way through the program, is through that. Then on the third step, the people who are in the program actually get to receive a little bit of a paycheck for being in the program for their work. So, not only are they staying busy, they are learning a trade. They don't get to go out, like, I couldn't go into this program and go to my office and say, hey, I think I'll go be Mr. Lawyer today. No, I've got to be a part of the program. That's what this program is about. It's not about individualism, it's about acting as a team and learning to flow with other human beings. With that being said, I would like to take a minute, if you, to have some other speakers. I'd like for Travis Byrd, who is a regional director for seven of the facilities, just to come give you all a taste of what this organization is about, and perhaps after you hear him, you'll realize more of the practical side of this organization. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Byrd if he would come up and take my place. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. So, as Mr. Ferguson mentioned, my name is Travis Byrd. I'm the regional director for Hope Center Ministries over the southeast region, that would include Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, and hopefully Georgia soon. We don't have any locations there, but as he mentioned, this would be the thirty-fourth location nationwide for Hope Center Ministries. We're in thirteen different states. Suffolk will be our fourth location in Virginia. We have them in Galax, Danville, Axton, which is a little town outside of Martinsville, Virginia, that's where I'm based out of, as well as one here in Suffolk. A lot of the information's already been shared with you, so I will be brief. You know, in the fifteen years that we have been in ministry, we've seen more than one thousand men and women graduate our program. As the staff has already mentioned, we do see a seventy percent success rate. Mr. Ferguson touched on what we consider to be successful, but the one thing about Hope Center is I wouldn't say we're just faith-based. I want to be specific, we are a Christ-centered ministry. We are more of a recovery program than we are rehab. We're more of a Christian ministry than we are anything else. So, as it's already been alluded to, men and women, or women in this case, are coming to our facility already detoxed. We do not have any medical staff. We've already built some medical partnerships in the area, just in case that were to arise, but people are coming to us already detoxed. But talking about success, what we consider to be successful is not just sobriety. I don't believe that the opposite of addiction is sobriety. If you've ever walked that road, you may understand what I'm saying. The opposite of addiction is connection, and so we want them to be connected to a higher power, and not just any higher power, not this microphone, but to a relationship with Jesus Christ. And we consider success, first and foremost, that you are living out as a fully devoted follower of Jesus Christ. I can't see your heart, you can't see mine, so we look at church attendance, right? So, attending church on a weekly basis, providing for their family, so working. We, as Mr. Ferguson also alluded to, we have a vocational training aspect to our program, so we hope to improve the workforce here in the city of Suffolk by partnering with local businesses. And then, so, we're talking about people who are going to church, people that are working, and of course, are sober as well. So, that's what we consider success, and we're proud to say we've had seven hundred people overcome a life in addiction in the last fifteen years, and we hope to bring that to the city of Suffolk. We've touched on a lot, it is a one-year program, it is a live-in program, they're there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, under the supervision of our staff that was mentioned by the staff as well. So, I'm going to be quiet for a minute and let you hear from a few more people since we're at six minutes, but I'll look forward to maybe answering some questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
That's not six minutes, that's one minute. Okay, we have one minute left on this section.
Hello, how are you guys? My name is Rachel Culbertson. I am the applicant, and I will be the director of our Suffolk Center. I only have forty-five seconds, so I'm going to tell you quickly that I grew up here in Suffolk. I graduated from Nansen Suffolk Academy in two thousand seven. When I was twenty-two years old, I was partying like most twenty-two-year-olds do that graduated from Nansen Suffolk Academy in this area, and somebody introduced me to heroin. And because I was drunk, I thought it would be a good idea. And once I opened that door, I decided that I would experiment more and that I would be the exception, that wouldn't get addicted like everybody else. And before I knew it, within a couple of months, my life was completely spiraling downhill, and I was completely addicted and in slavery to this drug. For the next three years, I spent my life in complete darkness and hopelessness. I tried everything from Suboxone to methadone to inpatient treatment to outpatient treatment and quitting in my own will. And it wasn't until I was in jail and I decided to surrender my life to Jesus Christ that my life completely changed. And February this year, made six years clean and sober from alcohol and drug addiction. And over the course of getting my life together and the Lord just leading me the way that He did, I got partnered with Hope Center Ministries through my church, and over the last two and a half years, this has been my mission, is to bring this to our community, which is in such a bad need for it. And I'm just thankful to be here, and I'm thankful for you guys listening to us today, and I hope that you will consider this, because this program, the same morals and values that we will instill in these women are the same ones that I've lived my life by that have made my recovery so successful. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll close this section for the proponents. Do we have any opposition in the audience? Seeing none. For the proponents, now you have five more minutes. Mr. Ferguson, you have anything else you want to add?
I am Ashley Green, Director of Development at Western Talbotah Free Clinic. I stand here today to tell you the need that we have for this. We support anything you can do for the rezoning and the efforts of approval to bring Hope Center Ministries here. We've seen it escalate, need for mental health, need for substance abuse. We've seen this at a heightened level post-pandemic. It is a problem here, it is a problem everywhere. It is local, it is national, it is global. So, I stand here today to support these efforts on behalf of the clinic and to let you all know that we also stand to be a health home for these clients that come to improve our communities. We're part of the safety net as a clinic, and they are part of the safety net. So, today, I would say, we do support this, and we stand beside them so that we can provide a medical health home for these clients and make our community better. That's what you all want, that's your service, that's council's service, that's what we plan to do, and we do support these efforts, and we thank you for your time.
We have three minutes and forty-eight seconds left.
Good afternoon. My name is Belinda Hoag, and my son is a resident of the Hope Ministry Facility in Galax, Virginia, and I do believe that this program is saving my son's life. He's been there three months. We just went to see him for the first time this past weekend, and my son is walking with pride. He loves the program. He has made great strides already in such a short amount of time. He seems to be excited about life again. He was a heroin addict, is a heroin addict, and the skills and the fellowship that he is receiving, I just, I can't say enough about Hope Ministries. I do believe that it is something that we really need in this area for women as well as men, and I just, I hope that y'all approve this zoning. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Commission. My name is Jordan Hale, and I'm actually a graduate of Hope Center. I graduated from our Springfield, Tennessee, location in November of two thousand twenty-one. I want to touch on just a couple of quick points. So, you know, my background, I had a real privileged upbringing. I went to the University of Tennessee, I double majored in finance and marketing, and actually, after college, I got into logistics. So, I was director of planning and customer service for a trucking company in Denver, Colorado. I had sixteen people report to me. And guys, I'm not saying this to prop myself up or anything like that, the point I want to drive home is that addiction doesn't care who you are. You know, there is a certain stigma about addiction that only affects certain people, certain people from an economic status. You know, I'm here to tell you, it's not the case. It can just as easily happen to anybody. When I came into the Hope Center, I was broken down emotionally, physically, and spiritually, and through my time there, I was restored in all three. I was restored with my family, my friends, and just the miracle that I've seen as going through this program to, for other residents, for their family, it's just been amazing to see, amazing to be a part of. I'm actually interning to be a director, so this is what you get, you know, out of this program. A lot of people continue to do this. You know, they'll have their lives, their families restored, and God has called me to this ministry because I've experienced firsthand what it can do and how it has saved my life. So, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hale.
Thank you. I'm Wayne Anderson, I'm the lead pastor at Family Harvest Church. We are the sponsoring church. We know Hope Center Ministries through and through, and we believe in the cause, and we are going to walk lock and step with them each part of the way. I also have come out of a drug culture. I have two siblings that I've walked through recovery personally, one of which has been through a Hope Center program, and God is moving through this ministry. But the idea that people, their lives are restored, mothers are restored to their children, children get their mothers back, daddies come home, and the families are restored, it's a huge impact. In every community that they've placed in, it has become the crowning jewel, something that the community can be proud of, and I'm telling you, it's pretty amazing. So, thank you for your consideration.
Public hearing process is a criteria that we have to follow. We would probably like to listen to all of you that's in the audience, give us your intake on this, but at this point, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Is somebody there? Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that when I first got my packet, the agenda packet for this thing, and was reviewing this item, I had a lot of questions and spent a lot of time thinking about it, and with the help of staff and conversations with Mr. Ferguson and other people, I've come to realize, I mean, the need for it was never endowed in my mind. I don't think anybody, when they've gotten to my age, and I'm sixty-two years old, does not have a friend, a family member, an acquaintance, a coworker, a church fellow member who has not fallen into the trap of addiction. And from the people that I have been experienced with who have fallen into that trap, it's a god-awful hole, and we're blessed that there are people like this Hope Center Ministries and whatnot that want to pull these people out of the abyss. And for that reason, I'm going to wholeheartedly and full-throatedly support this, what are we on now, the rezoning request, and we'll support it when it comes up for the conditional use permit.
Any other comments from commissioners?
I'd just like to say that I had the same reservations when I read the packet. In fact, I spoke with another commissioner about that, and didn't really quite know what to expect when I came in here today, but I'm going to tell you, you touched my heart, and you're going to have my full support.
Well, since I had no reservations, I move approval of R Z N twenty-two-two-zero-zero-two.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Hicks.
Second.
And Mr. Eberwine, you got a second? Any discussion in the motion?
Mr. Chairman. I feel bad now, to be perfectly honest with you, because I'm curious to find out your reservations on the actual rezoning of the matter, because, I mean, what we're dealing with first and foremost is rezoning a property, and if we rezone the property, even after Hope Christmas Center Ministries goes on, we still have to deal with the O I. And I guess my, I guess for my own clarification right now, so I understand, with all this R L M, it's a couple of B ones around it, why is office institutional the best zoning for this piece of property? And I guess staff can answer the question for me, is there any other zoning, if something similar to this came to the city, that they would not need a conditional use? I was just kind of curious about that. Is it the number of, because I know it says thirty people, is it the number of people that's actually staying there that makes the conditional use, or there's no kind of zoning? I mean, that's kind of my, I just want a clarification going forward, if somebody could help me out. I don't want to go against Jesus like everybody else, but I just want clarification.
In all the zoning districts, it does need a conditional use permit. It's not based on the number of people, it's based on it being a resident facility.
So, this type of facility, regardless of where it was going zoning-wise, it was still need a conditional use permit?
Believe so.
That's within the zoning districts that it's allowed with a conditional use permit. Under the R L M, it's not permitted at all.
Right, correct.
So, that kind of necessitates the need to rezone the property first. When it comes to your question in regards to the appropriateness of O I as opposed to other zoning districts, find comfort, and that was carefully vetted with the applicants, with city staff, and we landed on O I because it's probably the least obtrusive district where there are some remnant R L M zone properties along Holland Road, immediately adjacent. It has the, probably the strictest uses that are permitted by right when you're considering other ones like B one and B two, but we also looked to the comprehensive plan in this, and we saw that Holland Road is probably a transitioning corridor in which you do have a lot of remnant residential pieces. So, that was an important part of staff's recommendation.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel better now. I'm with Jesus.
Any other discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Wyrm, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks. Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Not going to give you a congratulation yet. We've got the next item to deal with, and from the comments and the discussion we've had earlier, I don't think we will have any problems with that. The next item is going to be on our agenda, would be a conditional use permit request, C U P twenty-two-two-zero-zero-one, Hope Center Ministries. Mr. Kevin Wyrm, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, C U P twenty-two-two-zero-zero-one, Hope Center Ministries, submitted by E. Greer Ferguson, Ferguson Rawls and Reins, P. C., agent on behalf of Rachel Culbertson, Hope Center Ministries, Inc., applicant on behalf of Daniel and Mary Jo Vanderhay, property owners. In accordance with sections thirty-one-three oh six and thirty-one-four oh six of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a medical, physical, and mental rehabilitation resident facility on property located at sixteen-fifty-three Holland Road, zoning map thirty-three, parcel ninety-nine. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, zoned R L M residential low-medium-density zoning district. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. When acting on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, C U P twenty-two-two-zero-zero-one. Once again, staff planner Alexis Baker will make staff's report.
Jump ahead a few slides. Well, let's see if I got there yet. Great. So pursuant to Section 31-306 of the Unified Development Ordinance, a conditional use permit recognizes that because of their unique characteristics or potential impacts on adjacent land uses, not all uses are generally permitted in certain zoning districts as a matter of right. Rather, such uses are permitted through the approval of a conditional use permit by City Council when the right set of circumstances and conditions are found acceptable. Section 31-406 of the Unified Development Ordinance requires that a conditional use permit be obtained for a medical, physical, and mental rehabilitation resident facility within the proposed OI zoning district. As previously stated, the Medical, Physical, and Mental Rehabilitation Resident Facility will house up to 32 female residents struggling with drug and alcohol addiction between eight and 12 months, along with a night monitor. All residents are required to receive medical detox and must be medically discharged by a medical doctor prior to admission to the Hope Center Ministries program. Hope Center Ministries will employ three staff members, which will include a director responsible for managing finances, ensuring the facility is maintained, and handling any issues related to risk management, a recovery coordinator who is responsible for recruiting and training all certified volunteers, and the night monitor who lives in the facilities with the residents and assists other staff members with 24-hour coverage for the facilities. There are two buildings on the property, a main house and a detached garage that will be renovated to create five bedrooms, two and a half baths, and a communal bathroom. Washer and dryer will be in each building. The staff office is located at the main home, along with the night monitor's bedroom. One community leader, who is a resident in the facility with proven leadership skills and has participated in the Hope Center Ministries program for at least 60 days, will be located in each of the five bedrooms. The community leader will report to the night monitor in the event of a need or crisis. Each exterior door and window will be armed with an alarm and automatically turns on from 10:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. each day. Cameras will be set to each angle outside the buildings and some in the community areas of the house. The night monitor will monitor cameras from the facility and the director from home, with video screens by their bed in case someone goes outside during non-permitted hours. Maximum of 33 people, comprised of 32 female residents and the night monitor, will be residing in the facilities. Should be noted that while up to 30 volunteers will assist residents throughout the three phases of Hope Center Ministries program, these volunteers will visit at different times. The parking and the driveway are gravelled and can accommodate up to six vehicles on site. As women move through this program, they may be able to park on site. Generally, there will be no more than six vehicles on this property. However, events will be held to allow for the visitation of family after 6:00 p.m. during the week and on weekends. As determined by the zoning administrator, additional parking spaces may be required. Site plan waiver or site plan will be required for additional parking. And also, this parking should be located outside of the RPA. The main house currently, the main house currently a single-family home with four bedrooms in total. The first floor of the main facility will also have a kitchen, dining room, living room, a great room, and a staff office. The upstairs of the main house will be renovated to remove the deck and replace it with a new deck and steps. The bathroom will also be renovated. This is a close-up of the new bathroom. It will be updated to include three toilets, three showers, one vanity, and one cabinet. This is the second building on the property, formerly a detached garage, which will be renovated to include storage, a waiting room, a chapel, classroom, and a half bath for the downstairs. The upstairs will have the fifth bedroom and a full bath. The bedroom in this renovated detached garage will only be for residents who have been with the program for 10 months and have earned more independence. Again, as I mentioned before, a community leader will be located in the bedroom, in the fifth bedroom, to assist the night monitor if any issue should arise. It's also worth mentioning that while 33 beds for 32 residents and a night monitor are proposed for the facility, it's ultimately up to the building official to determine the allowable capacity of this building, and this is reflected in staff's recommended So staff has found that the conditional use permit fulfills the UDO's conditional use permit approval criteria for several reasons, including the 1.9-acre property, subject to the conditional use permit request, would be required to comply with parking requirements, architectural standards, and additional setbacks and landscaping requirements due to its location in the SCOD. And again, examples of this is including a 30-foot SCOD setback and a 15-foot vegetated landscape streetscape from Holland Road. In addition to SCOD requirements, the applicant is required to install a vegetated screening between the property that's rezoned O and I, which is adjacent to the RLM zoning district. Next, minimal changes will be made to the exterior of the existing detached single-family home and detached garage, with the majority of the renovations to be made to the interior of the structures. The facilities will blend in with adjacent single-family homes in the neighborhood. Staff believes that the applicant can mitigate any potential impacts. Finally, the proposed use of a mental, physical, and mental rehabilitation resident facility shall not be a detriment or an endangerment to the public. The proposed use of the facility will provide a much-needed service for an underserved population. Next, city staff reviewed the subject property for compliance with public water, sewer, and traffic, and have determined that the parcel is currently served with city water and sewer by means of a 5 1/8-inch water meter and private grinder-pump station. There is a need, there will be a need to upgrade both the water meter and pump station as a result of the proposed use. This will require a site plan review and approval by public utilities. Next, traffic engineering had no concerns or objections to the conditional use permit request. They noted that a new concrete apron will be installed for this driveway as part of the Holland Road widening project, which is currently under construction. With that said, it is staff's opinion that the site in question is appropriate for the proposed use, given the existing and future infrastructure for the proposed use and its location, and that the use will not adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-001, with conditions presented in the staff's report. This concludes this report, and staff will stand by for any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Before I open the public hearing, I want to make clear, the proponents has 10 minutes, the opponents will have 15 minutes, which we see nine, and then you have five minutes for rebuttal. So now we open the public hearing, and we have 10 minutes. If anyone else has any additional comments.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. My name is Greer Ferguson. I'm an attorney practicing at 332 West Constance Road here in the city of Suffolk. I think a lot's been said about the substance of what we propose to do, and now we need the conditional use permit to cover some technicalities that staff feels we need to fit into the right box. I don't feel it's necessary for me to make any additional presentation at this time. I would prefer just, if you all have questions about some of these technical issues, about housing, safety, whatever your issues may be, I'm going to allow you, Ms. Colbertson or Mr. Bird, to come up and answer questions. And I think if you want those questions, they could answer them better than I. So at that, I will leave you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. We'll have those questions at the end of the public hearing. Anyone else to make any comments? Is anyone in the audience who'd like to have any?
Thank you for your time. My name is Penny Harkam, and Rachel Colbertson is the stepmother/mother to my grandson. But I've known her husband, Joseph, and family for a long time, as he is my grandson's father. And I'm working as a volunteer for Hope Center Ministries. And I have a little bit of a different background than some of the other people here in that I, excuse me, I lost two nephews to addiction. They were in Iraq and Afghanistan, and when they returned home from their injuries, they were addicted. And they couldn't fight all the battles. And they lost their battles. There were two of them. They were twins. And they're both gone to addiction. Addiction comes from overseas. When the boys come home, it comes from, as Rachel said, the NSA graduate. It comes in every walk of life. I also have a daughter, my grandson's mother, who is a recovering addict. You would think a car wreck and losing her leg would be enough to fight those demons, but it wasn't. It took quite some time. It took recovery. It took losing everyone she had, including her son and everyone in her family. But for one day, she had the strength to battle it. As her mother, losing a child is extremely hard and something no one should have to do. But fighting for their life is sometimes even harder. I can tell you, when you say "underserved community," it is extremely underserved. I can remember the days that she was ready to give it all up. I can remember talking her out of suicide on the phone. I can remember spending a week on the phone constantly, every hour that a facility was open, trying to find somewhere for her to go, because she had finally, finally said, "Help me." And there was nowhere for her to go. Either there wasn't a bed, or they wanted $10,000 for the first week. Most of us can't afford that. It was by the grace of God that a family friend pulled strings and got her in Raleigh. And if it was not for that person, she would not be here. I can tell you, she would not be here today. And I will have lost three of my family members. So if you have any reservations, go to a facility. Talk to someone who's been through it. And for them to be able to do it and find Jesus, that's the golden star right there. Thank you.
My name is Darlene Bagley. I'm actually the aunt to Dustin that's in Galax right now. Through our church and some circumstance in my own family, I came into Family Harvest Church, and I met Rachel. And her heart and her love for saving people's lives is just phenomenal. I mean, she doesn't just speak it, she walks that talk. And through all that, I've learned a lot. And with my nephew, if you would have seen him in December, when he called me for help, he couldn't even stand up. Every time he stood, he passed out. It was that bad. We brought him here from Delaware. We never had to get him in the hospital, and they said he's lucky to be alive. Because he was also lacing it with, like, horse tranquilizers, and he was so bad, to the point that, I mean, literally, he couldn't stand up. He looked terrible. I didn't think he was going to make it. And so they got him there, we got him to the Hope Center, and then when we went this weekend to see him for the first time, it was just like a flip switch of the person he was. I mean, he's happy, he's smiling, he's joking, he's healthy, he's put on weight. Not only just physically, but mentally, he's just changed. And this has only been, he's been there since December. This has been in that short period of time. And the way the facility is laid out and the staff that's in there, and the way they engage with these men and women is just phenomenal. I mean, they just don't, they're not in there just trying to help them. They physically care about who they are and saving their lives and getting them to be a better person. I mean, we went to church on Sunday, and even the pastor's like, "We just love him." You know, I mean, he's just like a totally different person I've ever seen, you know? And I'm just saying, Hope Ministry is there. We need it in Suffolk, we need it in our surrounding areas, because our families are dying it every day from it. You know, I've got neighbors' kids that have died over it, and our young people, it's just out there, they're grabbing them. And if we, you know, Satan just wants them, and we just need to save it. And this program, I'm telling you, from the bottom of my spirit, you know, these lives are going to get changed, you know? And I just pray that you approve it. Thank you.
I'm Rachel Colbertson, and I will be our director at our Suffolk campus once we get all the technical stuff taken care of. And I just wanted to come up here for another minute, because I was so quick before. And I really appreciate you guys even considering this. It's been definitely a journey getting to this point. Like I said, two and a half years ago, I decided that I knew I was called to this and that I was going to work for it, and Suffolk, Virginia scared the heck out of me because of the way our government works and everything. But, and then the first thing we had to do that I want to bring to you all's attention is we had to raise $100,000 for Hope Center to partner with us. And your community over the last year has raised $125,000 to bring this here. So there's, you know, a handful of people here today, but our community wants this so bad. And I just wanted to bring that to you all's attention and just let you know that everybody's working together to bring this. And it is just such an impactful program, and I'm willing, I'm here as the representation that will be here for the rest of my life to fight for these women and to fight for our community. And so I just thank you guys.
One minute left. Are there anyone in opposition? Hearing none? You now have five minutes. Anyone else, any comments? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for the approval of CUP 2022-001 with six conditions.
Motion for approval for Commissioner Staler with the six conditions.
Second.
Second. Okay. Mr. Creekmore? Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Wyman, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks. Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
I have a lot of names on my pad, and I don't want to call everyone name. But as a collectively group, I want to congratulate you. And this will go to City Council on April 20th with the recommendation for approval on both issues. Thank you. Next on our agenda is Item D, Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP 2021-026, Telecommunication Fiber Optic POP Site. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP 2021-026, Telecommunications Fiber Optics POP Site, submitted by Jack Duncan Shenandoah Cable Television LLC, applicant on behalf of 124 LLC, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a utility facility not otherwise enumerated on property located at 120, 122, and 124 South Fifth Street, zoning map 35G, N, C, parcels 28, 29, and 30. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Whaleyville Voting Borough, Zoned RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as a part of the Central Growth Area, Core Support Eustace. as a part of the Central Growth Area Core Support Eustis district. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP 2021-026. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will be presenting Staff, Staff's Report.
Thank you. As stated, the purpose of this Conditional Use Permit Request is to establish a utility facility not otherwise enumerated in order to establish a telecommunications fiber optic point of presence site on properties located on South Fifth Street. The properties are currently zoned RM Residential Medium Zoning District and are surrounded by single-family dwellings zoned RM. Additionally, to the east of the properties is the Suffolk Parks and Recreation Center, also zoned RM. The applicant is proposing to utilize three existing parcels located along South Fifth Street in order to establish a utility facility not otherwise enumerated use in order to establish a telecommunications fiber optic point of presence site to provide broadband and video services to the surrounding residential and business services. The applicant has provided a conceptual layout of the proposed use as shown on this slide. The applicant is proposing a 30-foot by 60-foot fence compound, which will be accessed from South Fifth Street. Within the fence compound will be a 336-square-foot equipment shelter, which will house the necessary fiber optic equipment and a 45-foot utility pole and backup generator. The utility pole will include antennas located at the top of the pole, which will be used to receive and send local channels to surrounding residential and business services. The applicant has stated that no full-time employees will be present on the site. Employees will visit the site during construction and during routine maintenance visits, which typically are one to two times a month. Additionally, there will be a turnaround and parking space provided on the site. As shown on the provided conceptual layout, the applicant has included an additional 336-square-foot equipment shelter that could be constructed in the future along with a 25-foot by 60-foot compound expansion. The proposed additional shelter and compound expansion would be constructed should additional equipment storage and space be needed in the future. It is important to note that the proposed future expansion of the compound would still be located within the subject parcels that are a part of this Conditional Use Permit Request. The applicant has provided an example of the proposed shelter and utility pole, as you will see in this slide. The proposed shelter will consist of brick material and be designed in a manner that will integrate with the surrounding residential uses. A conditional use permit recognizes uses that, because of their unique characteristics or potential impacts on adjacent land uses, are not generally permitted in certain zoning districts as a matter of right. Rather, such uses are permitted through the approval of a CUP when the right set of circumstances and conditions are found acceptable. I will touch on a few of the review criteria outlined in the C, for CUPs, however, each one is addressed in Staff's Report. The proposed conditional use shall be in compliance with all regulations of the applicable zoning district and Article 6 and 7 of the UDO. All requirements, as set forth in Article 6 and 7 of the Unified Development Ordinance, must be met. Additionally, as the site is located next to established residential uses, the proposed compound will be required to be screened from adjacent residential uses. Staff has placed a condition that the minimum required landscaping for this site shall consist of a landscape strip 10 feet in depth and shall consist of double-staggered row of evergreen trees. Compliance with the developmental standards, as outlined in the Unified Development Ordinance, will be further reviewed at the time of development plan review. Secondly, the purpose, the proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, or smoke or gas. During construction, the applicant anticipates the noise levels to be moderately between 60 decibels and 70 decibels, which is a little higher than the range for residential area. It is not anticipated to be any more noxious than the construction of a single-family dwelling, which is, would be permitted by right. Impacts from the construction of the proposed use will be temporary. After construction, the noise levels generated by the proposed use should be between 40 decibels and 50 decibels, which fall within the range that is normal for residential areas. Additionally, once construction is complete, the backup generator will run every Tuesday morning at 9:00 a.m. for weekly tests. The backup generator has a noise level similar to an HVAC unit for a single-family residence. Other than the weekly testing, the generator will only be operating during emergencies where incoming power service to the site is interrupted. The proposed use is not anticipated to have adverse impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. Staff finds that the proposed use of the utility facility not otherwise enumerated for the establishment of the telecommunications fiber optic point of presence site meets the criteria for conditional use permits set forth in Section 31-306 of the Unified Development Ordinance and that the use should not negatively impact the surrounding area with conditions that would serve to mitigate potential adverse impacts. Accordingly, Staff recommends approval of CUP 2021-026 with conditions outlined in Staff's Report and in the attached resolution. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions after the public hearing.
Now, open the public hearing on CUP 2021-026 Telecommunications Fiber. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. My name is Shiana Sutton, and I work for MBNC. We represent Shenandoah Cable Television. And I really just wanted to make sure, I know there's been a lot of confusion. This is basically a fiber hub. It's to bring service to the neighborhood so that Chantel and Glow Fiber can provide internet and phone and television service to the community, high-speed internet. So we're here. There's a couple representatives also from Chantel. If you have any questions in regards to the application. But that's really all I just wanted to say, to let you know that we're here and make sure. Because a lot of times, people get confused when it says telecommunications and think about cell towers. And we're definitely not doing that. This is really just for broadband and cable television, where we will need to put a utility pole on the property for receiving signal. And that's it. Thank you.
Does anyone else in the audience like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition? Do you have any additional comments before I close the public hearing, ma'am? Ms. Shannon? Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
I have an ignorant question. What determines, yeah, I can't think of your name, but from the company, Shannon. Help me out. What determines whether you need a pole or whether you piggyback on the pole that's already out? Oh, that's not me, that's not you, that's him?
Oh, well, he could as well. So there, there, in order to attach on an existing utility pole, you have to have attachment agreements and most likely some sort of agreement with the city. This would actually be on the property for them to attach their little antennas. I don't know if you can really see them. And this is a photo sem that we did to show what the, the facility will look like with the pole and the antennas up top. But you wouldn't be able to just take and put your antennas on any of the existing poles. Whoever owns those poles would have to give you approval, and you wouldn't likely be able to have the exact height that you would need. So therefore, we would just put a utility pole on the property with the antennas.
Okay. Okay. That was kind of a political answer, but okay.
I have a question. How does this compare or contrast with spectrum that we have citywide? Is that area, has, has that been identified as not being able to be through spectrum?
Okay. My name's Billy Hume. Director of Report, work for Chantel. We will be a direct competitor with spectrum. So we are, so we are coming in. We'll build, out of this facility, we'll build fiber optic cable. So instead of having coax hanging. Now, we are a traditional cable television company in other, in other localities. But here, we will be, be building fiber and high-speed internet video and telephone, a direct competitor with spectrum or whoever else may be here.
Thank you very much. I think it's something that we really need in here, is some competition with spectrum.
As a follow-up to that, will you be serving the entire city of Suffolk, pretty much?
Yes, sir. We, we would be. And even parts up, I have to get a map, but we have some parts laid out. It's probably in our franchise agreement as well, which I believe has been approved. But yes, we are serving Suffolk and then some other areas kind of up northwest, northeast, I believe, so.
What's your timeline for being able to provide service across this city?
About the end of the year. So we need to have certain parts of this turned up to meet our, now, we, I can't say we'd be serving the whole city by the end of the year, but there are certain parts that, as an internal milestone, we want to have it turned up by the end of the year to hit, to hit some of our numbers as well. But we, we need to have the facility, myself and Mr. Duncan, need to have it turned up August or, no, September, October timeframe. Then we can turn up some other things in the, in the area to light customers. So that, that's our timeframe right now. We, we have to, so we have to build fiber. So we're coming in pretty, you know, we have nothing here. So we, we pretty much have to go out and permit all the poles and build fiber. Whereas, you know, you got the existing telephone company, existing cable company, got all the poles permitted. We gotta do all that from, from nothing. So we, you know, we're working with the pole providers and, you know, to, to build that fiber so it can serve the customers.
The man at the podium, please. Any other questions?
Yeah. Sorry, more ignorance. If Spectrum has the monopoly in the city of Suffolk, how are you gonna compete with them?
Hopefully by, that's a good question. So, so our executives are running numbers. And we're, we're not only doing this in Suffolk, we're doing it in other areas as well, in Virginia, Pennsylvania. It's just a part of being competitive.
Just getting yourself ready?
Getting ourselves ready, yeah. Yes.
I have two. We have one land use, one community question. Why, first of all, why South Fifth Street? That's, that's, that's my first question. My second question is, because I, I was listening to the original proponent argument, there was some talk in the community. Were you, were you able to speak with some of the local civic leagues in the community if they had any kind of concern? So I guess it's a two-part question.
I mean, it's my understanding, Brittany was telling us that someone did call in, but they were concerned about multiple houses going up, not on.
Yeah, I, I can say, I did receive a phone call today. There were concerns for the application, but that, they were under the impression that it was three homes being built rather than what's being proposed here.
Right. And so we're looking to combine the three lots into one, which will go under the minor subdivision plan that is being filed, and just have the one maybe a future building out there for the equipment.
So to answer your first question about why Fifth Street, we had to be centrally located. And of course, in this market, real estate market is about, you know, that's about the only thing we could find. And, and a lot of locations, we have went into residential areas. And, you know, where we work with the local planning department, have it rezoned to where, you know, kind of fits our needs. But, you know, kind of the real estate market kind of dictated. We, we did look in other places, but we could not really find anything that kind of suited us. And again, we, we will be having to add some additional cabinets in other areas in order to serve the customer. Because we are, we do have distant limitations on this fiber. So, you know, where it's, where it's located, we will be able to serve the greater part of Suffolk. But then the, the parts up, kind of what I was describing before, northwest, we'll have to do something different there. Not quite a facility such as this, but a little smaller cabinet. You've probably seen Verizon, Ilex have them out in the, out in the field. And that, that will help serve those outer customers.
I just suggest between this vote and City Council meeting, you know, Lord's Place Rosemont, Hollywood Jericho, East Suffolk, Lake Kennedy, civic leagues, it would be good just to stop by and get the word out about what you're doing. That's just a suggestion I have. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question. You're talking fiber optic. Is that gonna be underground? Or are you gonna use microwave from that antenna that you're erecting?
So, so the antenna, so in order to provide service here, we have to provide certain TV channels. So that antenna's gonna pick up local channels. And that's the best way for us, or one of the ways we can do that. You know, we'll put the antenna up, just like somebody putting an antenna up on their house to, to bring in, I'm not sure what the local channels are, I'm from western Virginia. But the, the channels here, you know, we'll pick up on that antenna. We'll take them, combine them, and onto the equipment, which will bring it out on the fiber and then go out and serve the customers. So what was your second question?
So the fiber that you're going out with is gonna all be underground, the same as Spectrum is doing with underground?
So that's a question I can get back with you. I know some of it will be overhead, will be on the existing poles. But that's something, I, I can't answer that because I'm really not sure what the percentage versus underground versus buried is going to be.
You got a challenge.
Yeah, it's a challenge anyway, right.
Thank you. Mr. Culbert?
So I live in the Whaleyville section of Suffolk. Whaleyville, it's like 13 miles south. That, that may be a good area to be able to put you up. Because one of the reasons why I say so, because out that way broadband and internet is just crazy. A lot of people don't have it.
Right.
So I don't know what's the reach is gonna be from Fifth Street. But if you were in Whaleyville, then I think we would be on and popping.
I can, I can certainly take that back. I'm not sure what areas, other areas they're looking at. Right.
Mr. Chairman. If you were to bring the service to my house, would I have to rewire my cable inside my house? I mean, is it a completely different cabling network? Or would you bring it to my house and I would just simply switch my service to you?
There is some, I'm gonna let Jack, he's more of the home expert here. My name's Jack Duncan, project senior project manager for Chantel. To answer that question, sir, a lot of times is when they come in to do the construction, they'll come through and go through right of way, put a multi-port out in your, in the back easement. And when they come in to, you sign up, sirs, what it is, our internet is totally Wi-Fi. So what we'll do is we'll run a single fiber drop from that multi-port up to the back of your house. We'll put a, a small little box, like your little Comcast box. Then we'll run an outlet in your house. Normally, typically, it's 12 inches from an outlet for a wireless system. So once they plug in a small little modem, depending on what services you subscribe to with Chantel, Glow Fiber, the modem is probably four by four for just data. Then when you start working to your triple play, your telephone, and your cable, the, the modem be a little bit bigger. So it's, everything's broadcast from a fiber to the modem. It will be all wireless, wall-to-wall wireless. No drilling, no wiring, extra units to your house. They'll install what they call a Euro mesh system. From that point on, the service technicians will walk through your house with a Wi-Fi meter and test every room. You should be able to get the same Wi-Fi broadband service from sitting next to it or into your bedroom. If the service, if you hear upstairs, they'll go upstairs. They'll test every room. Then if the signal is weak, they'll plug in a small little Euro box amplifier. It will plug into an empty wall socket in a room that will amplify that service. So you should be able to get the same Wi-Fi strength throughout the whole house. And I've heard even people say they get it out in the backyard. That's how good it is. So.
So my question is, I don't have cable. I'm out in Holland, and there is no cable.
Well, you realize the government came out this year and offered a lot of money for cable companies to expand to those markets. So we are looking into that, and event, you know, we'll go out and we'll search and then we'll build out. But right now, it's the pop.
Give it direction to Holland.
I would have to pull it up on our, we, we have a KMZ file list. And I would have to pull up, and we have a master file that our, our, our management team works on, and they update daily that how soon and how far. So as this know, this is the first pop. This is the, as we could call it, point of presence. This is the first step. Our mine fiber will go up this route and it will come to that central hub. From that hub, it will branch out and go go up to the northern peninsula, go out into your other areas.
But without diving too deeply into the weeds, if it's all Wi-Fi, is it secure? I mean, would I have to worry about doing my banking or anything?
It is. It's 100%. Yes, sir. When they'll come in and everything is secure, when you come up in your initial install, the operator technician will set the Wi-Fi up to you, up for you. You'll automatically put in a passcode, and then from that is linked to your account. If they don't know that passcode, everything's the same. So that's, the only person who's gonna have that is you, sir, and your family. They do have securities that you can turn it off at night if you want it. You can go in and turn the Wi-Fi off and so...
I have just one thing that I'd like to say. When you're looking at your areas and everything, just remember the word Pitchkettle Road.
This is amazing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any more questions? Ms. Edwards?
No, no.
No, I just have an observation. As you can tell, you guys are trying to put your spot in the wrong place. I have, I have some reservations about this, but my reservations aren't about the company, because I can't stand Charter and now Spectrum. I can't stand them, and they have the monopoly. So I wanna vote for you, just because I can't stand Spectrum. But I don't want it in that spot. So I'm kind of conflicted. So I just gotta think about it for a couple minutes.
I understand, ma'am. I just, when we came up here, we decided, we were directed to come and find a property up here, it was very difficult. We have a main fiber route that we try to stay next to, and also be centrally located in the area. There were several other areas that we looked at, we viewed at, and it just, it was the wrong timing. The market is phenomenally crazy. We approached several property managers and offered them, say, hey, we wanna buy this. And they said, hey, I want the cash, I want cash only, or they wanna close in less than 30 days. So then it just came into where other properties we looked at was just way too far out. Then if we went out too far outside the central location, would have to go buy another piece of property somewhere else here in town or around this area. Like you said, the current location, we have to go, and we have to buy two more properties to get the peninsula area and the other side of the... But we did try.
But you cover Suffolk going back west, right? Centrally located, you can get Waylerville and Pitchkettle Road and all those, right? Or you don't know?
I have to look. I'm not sure what coverage areas.
I mean, I heard concerns about the northwest end of the city, but I didn't...
It's gonna be everything. It's gonna be...
Yeah, that would be another location.
Yeah.
They're not gonna put a building up. They, like Mr. Hume was saying, that they're gonna need a couple additional locations that we'll have to apply for as well, where they will hopefully find property to purchase, or maybe even work with the city on city-owned property
Yes.
to put up cabinets that will continue the service into the farther-reaching areas.
Light is good, it's better than copper, you know. The further you go out, you know, even with copper coax, there's a lot of resistance, and then your signal gets weak, and then you have, you know, in light, it goes further. But then when you get into those surrounding areas, that's way too far out, we'll have to go and put in like an amplifier and a small cabinet and a backup source to push that light out further. So eventually, we'll get there and, because hopefully, construction starts before the pop starts construction. So by the time we get our part done, fiber's there and get stuff turned on.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, just one quick question. Because you said, if South Fifth Street is an established community. So my question is, what kind of trucks will be coming to Fifth Street on the regular? I know you said it wasn't permanent, but on the regular to kind of fill up, is it like a regular, like Ford work truck, or is it gonna be something a little different?
During the construction phase, the building is a prefab building.
Okay.
So we'll come in there and start the Phase One part of it, land prep, get all that stuff, they come in and lay the foundation. After that, a crane will come in, and a small truck, it will pick the building up and set it on the foundation. Then after that is set, that is, that's the biggest truck you're gonna see. If, not unless the power comes and they have to do something like that. Most of them is gonna be at, you know, 350s, 3500s, and that's about it. I drive, or you might see my truck, a Silverado 1500. But once the construction's done and everything is all set up, I think the biggest truck you might see there is a Silverado. And as for routine maintenance, they'll come in, and they'll come in and set up, customers will come in, they'll go and do the programming and anything like that.
Thank you.
More questions to the audience there? Can we get a motion?
Yeah. I just wanna say one thing. I will make the motion for the approval for it. But I, I mean, you are around Hollywood, Jericho, Lord's Place, Rosemont, Lake Kennedy, Suffolk Gardens. Please, I urge you to, between this meeting and the city council meeting, try to get into those civic leagues and have a real good conversation, because you see the excitement here, all around the city. I think based off what you're saying, it would be great for that part of the city to have high-speed broadband internet in the backyard. So with that said, based off the piece of property on South Fifth Street in the city of Suffolk, I move for the approval of CUP 2021-026 with the stated five conditions.
Commissioner Edwards, you got a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Goodman. Discussion and motion? Mr. Wyman, call them. Go to roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, it's approved by this body, and will go to city council on April 20th. And keep in mind what Commissioner Edwards mentioned earlier about those other neighborhoods. Congratulations. The next item on our agenda is conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-003-5226, Regatta Point Road. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-003-5226, Regatta Point Road, submitted by Karen Guillemio, applicant on behalf of William and Juliette Guillemio, property owners in accordance with Sections 31-306, 31-406, and 31-70B13 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish an accessory dwelling unit detached on property located at 5226 Regatta Point Road. Zoning map 6D*RF*2*C, parcel 38. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Nansman Voting Borough, zoned PD Plan Development Overlay Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area, Core Support Use District. And when you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to city council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2022-003. Staff Planner Amy Boquilla will make staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. This is a request for a conditional use permit to establish a detached accessory dwelling unit located at 5226 Regatta Point Road within the Riverfront subdivision. The property is located in the Core Support Use District as designated by our 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The property is roughly three acres in size and is zoned PD Plan Development. The surrounding area is also zoned PD Plan Development. The applicant proposes to renovate an existing detached garage to convert it into a detached accessory dwelling unit for visitation for friends and family. The existing detached two-story garage is located to the right of the existing home and is not visible to adjacent properties. The existing garage also meets all setback criteria for the zoning district. In these photos, you can see that the existing garage matches the design of the main dwelling. Due to the size of the main dwelling, the accessory dwelling can be up to 1,000 square feet in size, and it is proposed to be approximately 958 square feet. The garage is already connected to the water and sewer service of the main dwelling, and the Department of Public Utilities has no concerns. The existing driveway is large enough to accommodate one additional parking space that is required for accessory dwellings, and traffic engineering has no concerns. No land disturbance is proposed, and so the Department of Public Works Engineering also has no concerns with this request. The applicant proposes kitchen amenities, a full bathroom and living area on the first floor. They have a sketch shown above, and will, after the CUP, if it were to be approved, they would then proceed with building permits. So this is a conceptual idea of where those features would be located on the first floor. The second floor is proposed to be comprised of the bedroom area. Currently, it's used as a game room. Staff finds that this conditional use permit request meets the criteria set forth in Sections 31-306, 31-406, and 31-701 of the Unified Development Ordinance. The proposed accessory dwelling unit is suitable for the size and location of the subject property, and it will not be rented, and is also not expected to negatively impact the surrounding community. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2022-003 with the conditions that are included in your staff report. And that concludes my presentation. I'll stand by to answer any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amy. We will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Thank you very much for the presentation there. My name is William Goyelmo. I'm the owner of the property, along with my wife, Juliette. She's joining me with our young one-year-old baby, Mary Charlotte, the youngest of four children we have. I'm a Navy veteran. When I was stationed here in Hampton Roads, met my wife Juliette. She's originally from Hampton. We got married in 2014, welcomed our first baby in 2015, and we settled down in Hampton, very close to her parents. Very fortunate, we were able to have that opportunity to be close to her family. As we grow through the years, we welcome, baby number four was on the way. We found a wonderful piece of property in Riverfront with a detached garage. We, at that point, thought we could get the opportunity to spend more time with my parents as well. And the property looked, it was really nice. Jennifer Cobb came out from the city, take a look list, to talk at the property, see if it was even feasible for that to happen. She gave us some great information there, and we were then saying, all right, we think it's feasible now that we could use this as a place where my parents could come and visit us and spend some time with the kids, with all four grandchildren. So we purchased the home in 2020, right in October, and from there, we went through the process of figuring out how we could do it all. And at that point, the planning staff was phenomenal in helping us out. I really wanna say thank you for them, for walking through all the pieces of that, to get the application together, understand we needed to submit the documentation correctly, and make sure that we could do everything to meet the needs of the city and meet the needs of the Planning Commission. So I just wanna thank you all for your time today, and we're hopeful to be able to have my family here, spend a little more time with us with this conditional use permit. Thank you all very much. Oh, and you did a great job pronouncing my name, too. So I'll tell you, when I was a kid, the way I taught was ghoul is a ghost, yell is in scream, and mo is in one of three stooges. Ghoul, yell, mo. So you did a fantastic job. And it just means William in Italian. So, thank you.
I'm not gonna attempt it. Is anyone else speaking in favor of this request? Is there anyone in speaking opposition? Do you have any additional comments you would like to make to us? We'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, they printed on thick today. We started with Jesus, now we have a baby. But with that said, I... And the main thing, because one of the conditions is for not being allowed to rent the dwelling. No, no, you, you want me to make the motion? Okay, all right. So I move for the approval of CUP 2022-003 with those conditions.
I second.
Commissioner Edwards with the motion with the conditions, and Commissioner Hicks with their second. Mr. Wyman, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Congratulations. And you go to city council on April 20th with the recommendation for approval. The next item on our agenda is conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-005-315, Bullock Street. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-005-315, Bullock Street, submitted by Ernest Grindel Emerson Avery Construction on behalf of Ronald Duke, applicant and property owner, in accordance with Sections 31-306, 31-406, and 31-801 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to restore a non-conforming residential structure to an extent of greater than 50% of its replacement cost on property located at 315 Bullock Street, zoning map 35C*6, parcel 16. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough, zoned RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as a part of the Central Growth Area, Core Support Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to city council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2022-005. Once again, Staff Planner Amy Boquilla will present staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon again, commissioners. This is a conditional use permit request to renovate an existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling by more than 50% of its replacement cost. The affected property is located in the Core Support Use District according to our 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The subject's property is located at 315 Bullock Street. It is part of the RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District. The existing structure is non-conforming as it relates to current regulations pertaining to building setbacks contained within the UDO. Specifically, the RM District requires a minimum front setback of 25 feet and minimum side setbacks of 10 feet. The subject parcel is roughly only 40 feet in width, such that the side setbacks are not met, and they're roughly seven feet setbacks on each side. And based on aerial imagery, the existing front setback is approximately 11 feet, rather than the minimum of 25 feet. The applicant seeks to obtain this CUP in order to replace the roof, windows, electric, plumbing, and HVAC system. The assessed value for the existing structure is roughly $40,000 per the City of Suffolk Real Estate Assessor's Office, and the proposed renovation cost is over that number. And so it exceeds 50% of the structure's assessed value. The applicant proposes a few adjustments to the floor plan without expanding the footprint of the structure. Staff finds that this conditional use permit meets the criteria for CUP set forth in our Unified Development Ordinance. The Departments of Public Works Engineering, Public Utilities, Traffic, and Planning have no objections to this request. The renovated dwelling will assist in improving the property values and appearance of the neighborhood, which should in turn enhance the enjoyment of the residents in this area. Additionally, it should encourage good stewardship of other properties in the community. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2022-5 with the conditions noted in your staff report. And that concludes my information. I'll stand and answer any questions if you have those after the public hearing.
Thank you again, Ms. Amy. I'll open the public hearing now. Who would like to come forward to speak in favor of this request?
I'm Carolyn Duke.
We want to just let you all know that this is my wife. We've been together for now for about three years. We've been married three years. She's lived in the house for about 20 years. We got married and settled in there, and we wanted to renovate the house to make it livable for us. Electricity is bad, and plumbing is bad, and we wanted to make sure, make sure that we could live in the house safely. We planned to be here for the rest of our lives. I'm 70 years old, and she's, what, 65, so we're not planning on... I'm sorry about that, but, you know, some of us don't look our age, so we... I don't mind telling anybody, so we just wanted to let you know that we want to renovate the house and make it livable for us. Thank you very much.
And thank y'all for giving us your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mrs. Duke. Is anyone here want to make any additional comments in favor of this request? Is there anyone here in opposition? Hearing ended. We'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, motion?
I move approval of CUP 2022-005 with the three conditions.
I got one comment. I sure wouldn't want to ride home with him this evening in the car. And I'll second that, too, please.
Any discussion in the motion?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on Commissioner Eberwine and say, I hope he lives to see the end of the construction.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, Mr. Duke, you go to City Council on April 20th, and I hope you make it until then. And you get the renovations done, and enjoy your home. Congratulations. The last item on our agenda today, Commissioners, is an exception request, CEX 2022-002-8008 Beach Tree Court. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. Exceptional request, CEX 2022-002-8008 Beach Tree Court, submitted by Christopher Stubbs, hogged your associates on behalf of James Lefwitch Jr., Bassnight, Kinzer, Lefwitch, and Knuckles, applicant on behalf of Cheryl R. Stalter, property owner, in accordance with Section 31-415 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant an exception to the development criteria and buffer area requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area to permit, in addition to the existing structure, to encroach into the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 808 Beach Tree Court, zoning map 5C1, parcel 42A. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chukatuck Voting Borough, zoned RL Residential Low Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as a part of the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be approving an exception to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area requirements to allow for an encroachment, and no council action is required. Staff Planner Grace Brazil will present staff's report.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. As stated, this CBPA exception request is to permit an attached addition to the primary residential structure and associated site improvements to encroach into the 50-foot seaward portion of the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer. The property is zoned RL Residential Low Density Zoning District and is also surrounded by properties zoned RL. The property is located within the Cedar Point subdivision, which was approved in the 1960s. The property abuts up to wetlands that have connected water flow to a tributary of the Nansman River, which has a 100-foot RPA buffer that encroaches onto the subject property. The lot is about 1.6 acres in size and features a single-family dwelling, approximately 940 square feet in size, and this structure was constructed in 1968. This lot was plotted and developed prior to the effective date of the city's 1990 adoption of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District Regulations. The current residential structure, which is before you, as shown on the existing conditions exhibit, was constructed before this date and is located entirely within the 50-foot section, or 50-foot seaward portion of that 100-foot RPA buffer. So the applicant is requesting to encroach into the RPA more specifically for the construction of an attached addition, attached garage, and two decks to the existing residential structure. Additionally, the applicant is proposing to repave a portion of the driveway to extend it to the proposed garage, and will be connecting the existing structure to public city sewer. The first addition will be 645 square feet in size, and will upgrade the structure from a one-bedroom and one-bath to a two-bedroom, two-bath. The garage addition will be approximately 581 square feet in size, and both additions will be constructed over a portion of existing impervious cover. The two decks proposed will total 183 square feet in overall deck area. Lastly, all the driveway improvements will be located within the existing footprint of impervious area, so essentially where the existing driveway is now. It's just going to be repaved to lead up to the residential structure. There are no proposed impacts to the wetlands on the property. So overall, the proposed additions and decks will result in a total of 1,400 square feet of improvements. However, as stated, since the proposed improvements will be constructed over a portion of the existing impervious area footprint, the total net increase in impervious area is only 441 square feet. Something important to note, this overall proposal will result in a little over 7,000 square feet in land disturbance. Let me see if this... So essentially, that's just due to a lot of this impervious area for the driveway having to be kind of dug up, reinstalled. You also have a little bit of a portion for the proposed additions, and you can kind of see right along here, that connection into the city public sewer, you're going to have a lot of temporary land disturbance. But it is important to note that all the land disturbance needs to be mitigated for, and the applicant has provided, which I'll go over in a later slide. So this is a close-up of the proposed additions and improvements. Per Section 31-415 of the UDO states that an exception may be granted if the following findings are made. I'm going to hit on a few of them, but all of them are within staff's report that you have. The first is a granting the exception will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied to other property owners. Staff believes this request does not confer the applicant any special privileges, since the property has limitations due to the age of the lot and the placement of the residential structure. Additionally, connection into public city sewer is an option to all residences that are capable of making that connection and should not be denied. Lastly, the applicant has attempted to limit the overall impact to the buffer area by limiting the increase of impervious area and by mitigating all impacts. Second, the exception request is not based upon conditions that are self-created. Staff believes this request is not based upon conditions that are self-created, as the law and the residential structure predate the adoption of the Chesapeake Bay Act. And then third, the exception request is the minimum necessary to afford relief. As stated, the proposed additions, decks, and driveway improvements will replace and be constructed within a portion of the existing impervious area footprint, and will only just expand beyond the current impervious footprint, resulting in a total net increase of 441 square feet of impervious area. So as presented and proposed, the applicant has designed the proposed improvements in a manner that they represent the minimal encroachment that is necessary to afford relief. So overall, staff finds that the applicant's request does satisfy the criteria outlined in Section 31-415 of the UDO to grant exception. So this is the buffer restoration plan that was submitted to mitigate for the total impacts to the RPA buffer. So to compensate for the 7,000 square feet in land disturbance, as well as for the seven trees that will need to be removed, to construct additions, the applicant is proposing to plant 38 canopy trees, 36 understrawed trees, seven large shrubs, and 94 small shrubs. The total mitigation provided and the type of plans proposed meets the minimum replacement rates as outlined in the Riparian Buffers Modification and Mitigation Manual. Overall, staff finds the applicant's request does satisfy the criteria outlined in the UDO to grant exception, and staff recommends approval of exception request, CEX 2022-002, with the following conditions noted in staff's report and the attached resolution. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be available to answer any questions anyone may have following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. We will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman Singleton, Vice Chairman Rector, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jay Lefwitch. I'm an attorney practicing in Chesapeake at 308 Cedar Lakes Drive, Chesapeake, Virginia, 23322. I think staff probably mentioned all the salient facts that I would want to bring to your attention, so I would just, and I know I'm the only one standing in your way between adjournment, so I'll be brief. I think as you listen to staff's recommendation, there are a couple of things that pop out to me, and that is, this is a 54-year-old home, never been renovated or added on to. With a lot like this on the water, you typically see, you know, someone wanting to build it anywhere from a 4,500 to 6,000 square foot home, and they're simply proposing they take this from a one-bedroom, one-bath, to a two-bedroom, two-bath with a garage. And I would suggest that the trade-offs are favorable to water quality, and that the septic system is also, to my knowledge, very old, and connecting it to public sewer would prevent any potential leaching in the future. And the garage, while one or two cars in the driveway probably wouldn't leak a whole lot, when the rain comes along, that would wash off into the watershed, and with a garage, it would be contained within that structure. 441 net area encroachment of area that's not already impervious, I think that's, you know, just maybe one-third of the total addition. There's no wetland impact. And lastly, for this parcel, you would use a 16% watershed value, and they've kept this under that so that no BMP is required. The last thing I would mention is that this lot is extremely already heavily wooded. In fact, it's so heavily wooded that moss grows on the driveway because sun doesn't hit it yet. To mitigate the impact into the RPA, they're going to plant 38 trees, 50-some shrubs, and some underbrush, so I stand by for any questions, and I ask that you look fairly upon the application. Thank you.
Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Who wants to speak in opposition? Mr. Lefwitch, do you have any additional comments you would like to make? Okay, thank you. We will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, motion, question?
Mr. Chairman, in looking at this, it looked like to me that it must be one of the first houses that was built out there. And I was surprised that it still has a septic tank. And after a person who's been through this recently with replacing septic tanks, you should be congratulated that it's been there as long as it has, but I can understand how you want to hook it up to the city sewerage system out there. But with that, I'll move to approve the, with conditions, the CEX 2022-002.
I'll second.
Eberwine for a second. Discussion and motion? Mr. Wyman, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
No.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks. Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to one.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Congratulations, Mr. Lefwitch, and this, I'm not sure, the young lady in the back, your request has been granted, and no further action by this body. That concludes our public hearings from today. Do we have, have any old business, Mr. Wyman?
No, sir. Other than, oh, let's see.
Going after the status report?
Yeah, the status report, the status report, and one preliminary plat to tell you about. So the status report for the results from City Council's February 16th meeting, there were two conditional use permits that went before them. The CUP 2021-024 Growth Herbal Bar and Shop, that was approved with conditions, and the CUP request, CUP 2021-025 Life-Changing Ministry for the church just down the road at 600 West Washington Street, was approved with conditions. As far as preliminary plats, there was one preliminary plat approved after your last meeting, and that was for a 60-lot detached single-family subdivision called Millstone. This was a preliminary plat that has been with the city for quite some time. They had some access issues they had to iron out. This actually came before you all several years ago, back in 2018. They amended some of the proffers associated with it, but that was approved on February
Any comments from the Commissioners?
I would like to say, I didn't want to get too excited while I go about the whole ministries, but I can appreciate the planning that we're allowing someone to bring a ministry in that's going to help individuals. So I was really excited, but I didn't know how to express myself at the time. Johnny did a good job, though. Johnny did a good job, but I just appreciate a ministry that's about people and helping people. Thank you.
Reverend Goodman?
That's what I was saying. Everybody looking stupid at Reverend, gonna say, and the Reverend didn't say anything. So I thought I'd make it right.
Okay.
I did hear him, under his breath, a little prayer for Mr. Duke.
Okay, Commissioners, is there no other comments?
Just one small observation. These exception requests, how many, does anybody remember how many we had last year?
I can, I can get that information. At one point last year, I remember there was a run on fences within the...
And this year is water.
And, yeah, so I will get that information to you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Does Grace have that information, maybe?
Okay.
She just put, she just put together a report for the state, so...
Yes, we had a total of nine exception requests come before this board. Of those, a total of six were fences, but that was for the year 2021.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
I think part about this, this one, was that the house was built before, you know, all of this, and the house was in that area, yeah. And so it's, you know, and I think it's a good thing that we're able to look at these things now and, and at least make it better for the folks that are, that are in those situations. And oh, by the way, I'm almost through with, with our commission, Planning Commission, the latest version of this thing through VCU, and it's all online, and they finally got the books to us, and so we're finishing it up hopefully before the next, our next meeting. But I'm loaded with a lot of information about zoning and all of that.
I guarantee you, now that you've finished that, whenever you travel, you look at the scenery entirely different.
Well, you know, one of the things about that was that it's com- Well, you know, one of the things about that was that it's comforting to me that we are pretty much in line with what they are teaching. And there are a number of cities and counties that are involved in this, there's about 25 or 30 people involved in this, that have issues that are not in line with, with some of the things that, that are being taught. So I'm glad that I'm, I'm in this part. But by the way, for, for those of you who have not been, they're going to do an in-session. It's not going to be online, which I'm glad, because, again, going, sitting there for two days or four days, actually in front of a computer, I'm just really surprised that some of our kids and grandkids have, have absorbed anything, you know, for the last year and a half or so because of this pandemic. It's, it's not the best way to educate anybody, I don't believe.
Comments? Miss Spanish, adjourn.